Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for May 21st, 2018. Call upon Councilmember David Jones.
Thank you, your honor. If you would all join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes of May 7th, 2018. Mr. McGough was thorough in his review of them and found one area of correction, which I understand has been made. Are there any other changes or corrections to the minutes? And seeing none, the amended minutes will be approved as presented. Next, we have petitions, recognition, and communications, and I'll call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeiffer.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could go and have the W. Michael Northee Foundation Board come on up, and we're going to start doing some awards. But first off, let me go ahead and give you some background. The W. Michael Northee Foundation was created to award scholarships to those pursuing a higher education degree and to assist officers and their families in times of need. Officer Northee was a police officer for the city of Arvada who was tragically killed after being struck by a car while making an arrest on August 11, 1979. Northee was very active with the youth of the community, and the Northee Foundation was created in his honor. The scholarships are funded by two events organized by the Northee Foundation, the Drug Take Back every April and the Shred-a-thon every October, and by generous, sorry, donations from our community. At this time, we'd like to recognize these students and present them each with a certificate, and I guess you'll come down, and I'm going to give the name, and I'll come and shake hands as well, and then, once we're done with this, we'll get into the Glassman Scholarship as well.
All right. So first, we have Kyle Van Horn from Faith Christian. Kaylee Robb from Arvada West. Amy Burke from Pomona. James Kleckner from Arvada West. Natalie Thede from Arvada West. Kate Bashford, Ralston Valley. Kayla Hatchin from Faith Christian, who is unable to be here tonight. Lucy Holland from Arvada West. Sam Howell, Arvada West. Sasha Raymer, Ralston Valley. Carrie McCauley from Pomona, who is unable to be here tonight. Jenna Chavez, Pomona. Lauren Bader, Ralston Valley. And Shay Mauser from Arvada West.
I think they'd like to get a picture of the council standing behind these great Dot Miller.
I looked away because she distracted us.
Did you get what you needed?
Now, class.
Yeah, so, we actually have one more. So, the Jim Glassman Scholarship is given to one student each year to honor and preserve the memory of the Arvada Police School Resource Officer, Jim Glassman. Finally known as OG, Glassman worked at the Arvada Police Department for 39 years, from June 1977 to January 2016. The majority of his career was spent as a resource, school resource officer at both North Arvada Middle School and Pomona High School. Glassman was passionate about his students and quick to offer a friendly shoulder or a piece of gum. When he retired in January 2016, more than 2,500 students wrote testimony on the Arvada Police Facebook page to congratulate him and thank him for his impact on their lives. When he passed away suddenly in February of 2017, the sadness was felt throughout Arvada, and thousands left memory messages for him, and hundreds more attended his memorial service. The inaugural Jim Glassman Scholarship recipient is, is it Mimi we go by? Mimi Sawakid from Pomona High School. Congratulations to each of you for your hard work, and we wish you all the very best as you start or continue college education. We are proud to have each are such a fine representation of future leaders from Arvada. I understand that the foundation is hosting a reception for you and your families downstairs in the atrium, so please go down there and after we enjoy, but let's go ahead and give Again, congratulations and enjoy your festivities downstairs. Thank you.
Congratulations, one and all. Good luck as you move forward. Oh, looks like you guys would all rather go party than be with us. Okay, next, we have public comment on issues not scheduled on the agenda. We do have a three-minute limit, and there's been some discussion of people coming forward and having a group of people and trying to pool their time, no pun intended, because we're going to hear from the North Jeffco Hurricane Swim Team regarding Myers Pool, and I would ask you to keep it around six minutes if you could. Okay? Very good. Yeah, they had, five of you came, right? And so, great.
Okay. My name is Nia Polly, and I go to Arvada West High School. I've been swimming on North Jeffco, which practices at Myers Pool, for five or six years, and it's helped me connect with others in the community and make a lot of friends. It's the only facility that's really adequate to host all the swim teams in Arvada. This includes private clubs like North Jeffco and also many high schools, including Stanley Lake, Ralston Valley, and Arvada West. Staying active is also an important part of the pool, and it helps teens promote a healthy lifestyle along with important life skills like time management and dedication. But it's not only used for swimming, although that's helped me, although swimming is how I've used it, that's not its only use, and I think it's important for us to keep it running and build a replacement.
All right. My name is Erin Stecker. I'm a junior at Ralston Valley, and I'm 17-years-old, and I have been swimming at Myers Pool for about three years now, and I use that pool for high school and club swim teams. And I feel like swimming has been a very big part of my life because it has given me lots of life skills, like she listed, like responsibility through dedication in my life, organization through time management, and also a way to reduce stress from like school and other activities that are going on in my life. And Myers is not only used for the clubs in Colorado, but also for clubs nationwide outside of its borders for very important meets for high school and also club teams. And if we didn't have that pool, we would, it'd be very hard to find another pool to host that, those multitude of teams that depend on that pool. And it has also given a lot of people a chance to embrace their skills in the sport of swimming.
So I give you more time, and you don't even use up the... Excellent, excellent presentations, good points. You need to know you have a champion up here in Dot Miller. She's good friends with Missy Franklin's parents, and so, as, watch Missy as she went through her entire Olympic training and watched her from, well, tell us a little, Dot, in terms of how long you...
So I've been watching Missy since she was 11-years-old, and I remember when she was 12 saying, "When you make the Olympic team, I will be there." And then she made the Olympic team, and I felt really bad that I didn't. She's still, to this day, you know, I still talk with her a lot, and to this day, she brings that up, so. I did reach out to her. She was one of the first people I reached out to when we started talking about this pool, so she's excited about it as well.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Did either of the other three young ladies have anything they want to add, or you're going to defer to your spokespeople? They did a good job. Yeah, let me, let me do explain this, as Mr. Pfeiffer suggested, as to why these young ladies are coming forward and why we're hearing from the community on this issue. Myers Pool is, what, 50-years-old now? Is that, not, not quite that old?
Probably more, more around 40.
40-years-old?
Yeah.
Okay. So, but it's becoming to the end of its useful life, and it simply can't be maintained any longer. It's got, you know, the cost to maintain it are growing every year. I actually have been contacted by a Supreme Court Justice, Justice, Colorado Supreme Court Justice, Justice Boatwright, whose children went through great programs at that facility. And we are exploring with the school district and with the Apex Parks and Recreation District, what do we do in terms of the need to replace Myers Pool, either at that site or at some other site? And so, we are in discussions with those groups. It's an expensive proposition, without question. It's about a $24-million price tag to replace that pool. So as we are having our discussions with regard to a bond that is retiring here in Arvada, that we hope that the citizens will consider renewing, that perhaps a portion of that could be used, although we've got tremendous traffic needs and roadway needs. We've got a lot of competing issues and interests, but this is something that has gotten a lot of attention from a variety of groups, and so, we are having discussions with all the other involved parties and trying to work together to see how we can address the need for a replacement for Myers Pool. I appreciate you ladies being here, and stay tuned for our future discussions. So, thanks. Next, I'll call upon Randy Mormon, who's going to speak on behalf of the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. My name again is Randy Mormon, and I am with the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee. And, I'll raise this a little bit. Happy to be here with you this evening as a first of several briefings that we'll be providing you over the next couple of months about our work. Over the past year, we've been studying our waste system and looking at how we can improve that. You should have gotten a memo from us in your packet, and so, I'm just going to briefly cover that, and I certainly would be happy to take questions from you. As part of our look at the state of recycling specifically in Arvada, we refer to a report that there's also a link to, and this came out in last November on America Recycles Day, the Colorado Public Interest Research Group, and EcoCycle put out this report, the first of its kind. I do have to disclose that on my day job, I work for EcoCycle, so I was part of this report. And, and it was the first of its kind in looking at collecting data across the state and looking at where we are with recycling. Statewide, we're not doing very good. We're actually around 12% at our recycling rate, and I provided in the memo kind of how that number is calculated for you, and happy to take questions on that. But what I wanted to, of course, point out is, whereas the city of Arvada, and if we look at the front-range cities that are provided in the report, unfortunately, we're down towards the bottom. We have a recycling rate of about 13%, so that means that's residential material that is collected, and that's the 13% of what is collected, whether it goes to the landfill or is, a small percentage may be composted, but, or is recycled. And so, the 13% refers to the recycling rate of that material that's collected. And so, the question is, why, why are we doing that poorly? And the answer, I think, comes into a couple of reasons. One, if we go back to our 2011 residential hauling study that was done, we found that 60% of Arvada residents don't have curbside recycling. And when we look at the leading cities, whether it's here in Colorado or across the country, those cities have a recycling cart or bin at every single household, and those cities then are recycling and collecting about 100 pounds more than what we are on average per household, per year, annually. And so, that, I think in itself says a lot about just the fact of convenience and what that does for helping us to improve our recycling rate, and so, that's one of the things we're looking at, is how we can improve that, make it more convenient for folks, and hopefully get a bin at every household. And then, the next thing I wanted to mention is the fact that there is an economic disincentive. If you look at HOAs, they often provide recycling as part of their plan and their program of waste collection, and our non-HOAs usually have to pay extra for that service, and so, it's an economic disincentive. I see I have four seconds left, so I will stop there. Happy to take questions, and again, I said this is a first of several briefings we'll be providing you on our work looking at our waste system.
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate the information. What I really appreciate is that you gave us the white paper in advance so that we would all have it. You know, during council, or during public comment, we don't normally get into too much of a dialogue, but I expect that we will be having future meetings where we will be getting more in-depth, and I know that Nancy Ford is very involved with, with the committee and others as well, and so, we will, I think that would be a great way to funnel some questions back and forth, so as we have...
Excellent. I appreciate that.
And we appreciate the work of the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Next, I'll call upon Frank, is it, Sturgis? Okay, Sturgis.
I was, I was told that there's some way to show a picture up here.
Yes, if you'll put it right on the center of that table, in that small black or gray box there, right there, and then we can zoom in on it.
Okay.
And then turn it over, because it's, the camera flips it. Very good.
Coming here because this happened in our neighborhood a couple of months ago. We knew that something was being built, but we expected something that would probably match or look like the house next door there, if it was being put in that yard, and conformity is what we would have expected. Can't see that in that particular situation. I was leaving my house going somewhere in the morning, the street was blocked. I thought that there was construction going on on the street, came back, and that was there. Poof. All of a sudden, we had something. And I have been to the neighbors, or the neighbors have been to me, saying, "What's that thing? Why is that trailer there? How can they do that?" I brought pictures here to the city offices. I've shown them to 11 people in planning and development. I've taken them to the city manager, and in every case, I got, "That sure doesn't look like a accessory dwelling unit," or "A small home, tiny home," some of them call it. Doesn't look like it really belongs there, and nothing has been done to try and make it look like the house. So we don't feel that the conformity is there, and we also don't feel like the rules of an ADU are actually followed. I know, I know that we probably can't do anything about it now, been told that we can't do anything about it now, but new land development codes are coming up. In this particular document, it says, "To preserve the appearance of the single-family dwelling." I can't see it. Shall be compatible with the design of the principal dwelling." I sure don't see that. The principal dwelling unit, "Use of similar wall exteriors. One's brick, one's tin." I can't see how that's similar. And looked up the word similar, and it says, "Nearly exactly the same." Window types, door window trims, roofing materials, they did re-roof the house to match the roof on the accessory. However, I'm concerned that people reading these rules and these regulations have not conformed to the spirit of what was supposed to be there. And the people that I've shown it to seem to agree, and that's a number of people through the, the city offices and a couple of the people sitting in front of me that I showed it to. Primarily what I was after doing is showing that. I could show one of the things that they did in approving it. That's where it sits, facing the people next door's yard. It's now, the front of their, this building goes out into their yard, and instead of going to the property that it's on, it split the property kind of into two homes instead of one, or one with an ADU, and this particular situation seems to take away the rights of the people that have this property next door. Nobody was informed that it was coming, and the only thing that we were able to get information was, is that they did follow the permitting process. But in doing that, they followed the letter of the law, but not the spirit of the law.
Well, Mr. Sturgis, I understand you've spoken with the city manager's office and with other people on staff. What will happen now is, now that you've brought it before us as a city council, we'll get some more input from staff, and we'll be back in contact with you.
Okay. I was hoping that we might have some say-so or input to the new land development.
Well, let's talk about that, in terms of what that process is. Mr. Devon, do you want to address how, how individuals can sort of carry these kind of concerns forward so that we look at them as part of the land development code?
We have three open-house events that are scheduled this summer. I don't know the dates off the top of my head, but Mr. Sturgis and I have talked already, and I'll make sure that that information gets to him so that he can incorporate these comments as part of those, those open-house discussions.
Okay.
So, we'll have a way for you to be involved, to be heard, and to perhaps make some changes in terms of how these things move forward in the future.
That sounds good. I have two letters here addressed to the Arvada City Council. One of them that we're not able to get here.
Sure.
It was in March 18th. It did go to the planning and development, I guess, and they did respond to it. And I have a second letter of what the person that put this in got back.
Great. If you'll give that to Kristen Rush, our clerk, she'll make sure that we all get copies Thanks for coming down here tonight. It's always good to see pictures. Pictures are sometimes worth a thousand words.
There are some pictures already here in the building.
Okay.
That, that they asked for and have shown.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other individual of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for new business. First, we have the consent agenda. We only have one item on the consent agenda tonight, and that's R. 18043, which is a resolution authorizing a license agreement for subsurface drain outlet points and landscaping by and between the city of Arvada and Leiden Rock Metropolitan District and pertaining to the Leiden Rock subdivision. Do I have a motion on that? Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, your honor. I move that consent item, R. 18-043, be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have a, one resolution. Resolution 18044, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, JPPHA, and the city of Arvada for secondment of an Arvada employee to JPPHA. And Mr. Devon, I'm going to ask you to explain what a secondment is.
Well, a secondment, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is essentially the loaning of an employee from one organization to another in order to facilitate and support that, that organization's work. Basically, this would be the city of Arvada covering the initial cost for the secondment of an Arvada employee to the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, which, and that employee is none other than our retiring deputy city manager, Bill Ray, who is nearly completing, or maybe perhaps has completed, 10 years as the interim director of the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority. As the council well knows, he has fulfilled that role for a long time and fulfilled it very well. What this agreement will do is allow Mr. Ray, as he transitions into retirement, to work part-time as the executive director of the JPPHA. The city would cover his, on an hourly basis, his current salary and benefits, and then the JPPHA would reimburse the city. This would allow Mr. Ray to continue his work and continue the progress that is being made on the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, and we enthusiastically recommend that you approve this resolution to allow this work to continue.
Very good. Ms. Ford, did you?
I'll make a motion if no one has any questions.
You had your light on. Great.
I move that R. 18-044, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority and the city of Arvada for the secondment of an Arvada employee to JPPHA be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18023, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada, Colorado, acting by and through the utility enterprise and the Metro Wastewater Reclamation District regarding a temporary exclusion for the Trinity Storage Development. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is associated with the Trinity Storage Development, wherein we were not able to, to provide service to that location through the Metro Wastewater District because of the fact that the line that would serve that area is quite a distance away. So what this agreement does is it permits the Trinity Storage Site to work under a individual sewage disposal system, otherwise known as a septic system, with, with the, under the condition that as soon as it's feasible to connect to the metro district wastewater main system, that, that, that will be completed. The council took an earlier action on this, and just recently, the Metro Wastewater District Board took a similar action, and what is going on tonight is that this formalizes the agreement and will mandate that as, as actions occur in northwest Arvada, this facility will move off of the septic system and onto the mainline sewer system.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Jones.
I don't have any questions, but I'm happy to make a motion.
You may make the motion. This is your district.
Thank you. I move that Council Bill 18-023, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada, Colorado, acting by and through its utility enterprise and the Metro Wastewater Reclamation District regarding a temporary exclusion for the Trinity Storage Development be approved on final reading. Storage Development be approved on final reading number 4641 and ordered published by title only.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 18024, an ordinance adding Section 62-78, unlawful to remove notice to Chapter 62 offenses of the Arvada City Code and establishing penalties for violation thereof. And as I understand it, we've got an amended motion on this, and whoever makes the motion, if you'll use the amended motion. Mr. Devon?
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to introduce this. Mayor and members of council.
This looks like a city attorney kind of thing.
Thank you. So this ordinance will make it illegal to tamper with or remove a notice placed by a city employee or another person under the authority of a city ordinance or policy or as a result of a city board or commission process. An example would be a notice placed as part of a planning commission or a board of adjustment case. Another example is a notice that's used to facilitate cleanups on publicly-owned property. So those are just some examples for you. Staff has realized over time that on occasion, these important notices were either tampered with or removed altogether. This deprives members of the public, of course, of receiving proper notice of the impending city action or activities, and I think council from time to time has heard about those situations as they come up. While there's no perfect solution to the problem of removal of these notices, staff recommends that by passage of this ordinance, it would make it illegal to tamper with or remove these notices. In the future, these notices will state that it is illegal to tamper with or remove them, and that there are criminal penalties for doing so. Of course, once the reason for the notice has ended, meaning the border commission hearing has been held, the notice may be removed lawfully. City council has been provided with an updated version, as the mayor indicated, of the ordinance as it accepts out notices placed under the provisions of the building codes, so-called red-tag notices. Removal of these notices is already addressed under those codes, and so we don't need to include it in this particular ordinance. And so as the mayor indicated, whoever wishes to make a motion on this, please indicate the language ordered published in full.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this item tonight? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion, open it up for city council question or action. Mr. Pfeiffer, you were first. You beat Mr. Marriott.
Do you have a question, Mr. Marriott? No?
Just by that much.
If there's not any questions, I'd like to make the motion.
You may proceed.
I move that Council Bill 18-024, an ordinance, sorry, there's two ordinances in that statement, an ordinance adding Section 62-78, unlawful to remove notice to Chapter 62 offenses of the Arvada City Code and establish penalties for violations thereof be approved on final reading number 4642 and published, or published in full, right? Be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Mr. Devon, I don't know why you don't just put all these kind of really tough public hearings on, you know, nights when we have a lot of other things to.[1351.13][1351.13][laughing] Just the way it works out. No comment from Mr. Devon. That's probably why. Okay, we can reopen it for public comment if any member of the public would like to address city council at this time. Seeing none, I'll close that and open it up for city council committee reports. Any reports or other reports from city council members? Mr. Jones, you're first.
I just wanted to announce that on the 29th of May, let me make sure I've got the right date here. Yes, May 29 at 6:30 at Stott Elementary, I will be hosting a community conversation to those members of District Four that would like to come, and anybody else. But just wanted to put out there that happy to engage with the community, and hopefully people will come. That's all I got.
Okay, I don't see any other council members. It was my sad duty this weekend to go to two celebration of life celebrations on Saturday. Since last we met formally, we've lost two people of significance, and of course, others as well, of significance. But the two that have sort of impacted the region and some prior community members were first Steve Hogan, who was the mayor of Aurora. Steve had served for a long, long time, back before the days of term limits, and in fact, in his, he wrote a very touching letter to the community prior to his passing in which he kind of, with his usual wit and humor, said, "You know, I don't really believe in term limits." But the reality is this one unfortunately got him. He was, his life was celebrated by many, many people who attended the memorial service Saturday down in Aurora. He was respected, loved, was a personal mentor of mine, a friend of mine, and frankly, was a friend to so many communities. He used to like to joke that the thing he really wished Aurora had was the Arvada Center for the Arts and Humanities. He loved coming out here for productions and was pretty envious of what we have here in Arvada with that great facility. He worked tirelessly on transportation issues. He and I served on the Metro Mayor's Caucus, really working diligently on how do we solve the traffic needs for not only today, but for years and years to come, and he will be missed in those future discussions. He was a big believer in, I think, inclusivity, and Aurora, of course, has demographics that have a huge variety of citizenry from throughout the world, and to a greater extent, probably than any other metropolitan community in our region. And he was a true champion for their efforts through sister cities, and just in terms of how they approached working with a very inclusive community, and I think he and his city have been a great model to all of us in that regard. So he will be missed. We also celebrated the life on Monday of Judy Terranova, the wife of former city councilman Ted Terranova. And one of the best lines that Mr. Terranova had at her memorial service is that through the time that Ted and Judy were together, she was able to convert from, convert Ted Terranova from terrible Ted Terranova to tolerable Ted Terranova.[1592.23][1592.23][laughter] And it's so true. So these two individuals will be missed. Both gave great parts of themselves to their respective communities, and I think it's important to recognize their passing and the impact that it has on our communities. That, Mr., we've got a couple more items here. We have an appointment to the Metro Wastewater Reclamation District Board. Someone would be so good as to make. Oh, I get to make the motion. I move to appoint Craig Koshin to the Metro Wastewater Reclamation District Board for the period July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2020. And Mr. Marriott.
Yes, I move to ratify Mayor Williams' appointment of Craig Koshin to the Metro Wastewater Reclamation District Board.
Okay. Got a motion, and a motion to ratify. Need votes from Mr. Pfeiffer yet. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero, with all council members supporting that. Craig Koshin, who's the former city manager, has been a real advocate for the city of Arvada issues down at the Metro Wastewater Reclamation District Board, and we're pleased to reappoint him to that board. Next, if I can call in Dot Miller.
Yes, Your Honor. I move to cancel the May 22 meeting.
Motion's to cancel the May 22 meeting. That passes seven to zero. And Ms. Miller.
I move to call a special meeting on Tuesday, June 5th, 2018, at 4:00 p.m. for the sole purpose of an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024F regarding a personnel matter. Council will meet with a consultant to facilitate a discussion regarding the performance of three council appointees in preparation for the June 25th, 2018 appointee evaluations.
Very good. All votes are cast. Ms. Miller, we may have you start reading all motions. You do it in just a great, great voice. Yes, that's well done. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Report from the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, on June 11th, we will have a workshop focusing on public safety. It'll essentially be, I think, one large presentation, but it'll have two parts. One is health of the city, where we'll look at certain data that will give us an idea of safety around the city and other issues along those lines, and then a second part on youth engagement. That'll occur at your next workshop on June the 11th.
Okay. Mr. Daley? We stand adjourned. Thank you.